Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Special Committee of the Whole Meeting for July 24th. I'd like to call the meeting to order and recognize that we're on the traditional territory of the NAMO First Nations. Introduction of late items. Ms. Gurry.
Thank you, Worship. On the Special Committee of the Whole Meeting agenda this evening, we are adding correspondence from Nanaimo Recycling Exchange dated 2017 July 20th, and we're removing Agenda Item 12A delegation from Bill Hicks, and that's it, Your Worship.
Thank you. Counselor Kip.
I have a late delegation request from Mr. Leon Cake, not related to report on council, but it is regarding a delegation that is on council, so.
So, Your Worship, you'll vote on that individually, as well as any other late items that come forward?
Thank you. Okay, so, counsel, it's been moved that Mr. Cake be out of this delegation for an item somewhat related. Moved by Counselor Hong, seconded by Counselor Kip. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. I would like to add a request to delegation from Mr. Marty Steele on Item 12C, which is a delegation from Catherine Davis. It moved and seconded.
Same description?
Yes. So, that, an additional delegation like that requires some motions. So, it's been moved and seconded. It was moved by Counselor Hong, seconded by Counselor Kip. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. All right, so we have a motion for the adoption of the agenda as amended, please.
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Bestwick, seconded by Counselor Kip. See no discussion? Call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Can we have now a motion for the adoption of the minutes of the June 26th meeting, please? Moved by Counselor Bestwick, seconded by Counselor Armstrong. Thank you. Any discussion, errors, or missions? Seeing none? Call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. So, next item is Number 8A, the Partners in Parks Request for Cinnabar Valley Park, and it's to be introduced by Mr. Richard Harding, Director of Parks and Recreation. Mr. Harding.
Thank you, Worship. Another active neighborhood group wanting to do some enhancement into the, one of our older parks, actually, Cinnabar Valley Park. This one's been actually updated by the neighborhood for many different phases over the years. The group, there's a picture or a map on page, it's showing up on the screen right now. We're also on Page 11 of your report, the number of things that the group's going to be fundraising for and working with staff in the next little while. The funding right now, if it's allocated, allows the group to go out and show support that the council's behind it, and none of those funds will be expended until the group has been able to secure other components, and then the work would proceed.
Thank you. Counselor Bestwick.
Would you like a motion on the floor before discussion, or what's your preference?
I would say motion on the floor.
I would so move.
It's been moved and seconded. It's been moved by Counselor Bestwick, seconded by Counselor Yocum. Thank you. And that was option number one, as recommended?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. You wish to speak to it?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Mr. Harding, a couple of questions. Inside the body of the report is improved parking for this site. Could you help me better understand where and what that means?
Yes, just on the, if you look at the image there, it's the top left-hand corner. This park serves a larger neighborhood, so particularly with the multipurpose courts. So, it's just improving a little bit more of the pool in parking there to provide a couple more stalls, but also just improve the stalls that are there.
Thank you. And given the distance from, to get there, if you're, you know, walking from anywhere beyond out of your car, one of the subject matters is improved temporary washroom facility. Is that a, like, is that a condition that this project have a temporary washroom facility there?
Yeah, so it would be a seasonal one, which we've done in some other parks. It would be more of an operational issue. We'd work with the group on, where we put, wash them in there seasonally, particularly during the summer breaks, where sometimes we'll put some summer camps in here, or other day camps will go and utilize the park and just provide some longer use of that neighborhood, where you're not able to walk home.
Thank you.
I wonder if I could ask a couple of questions. One is the budget on the project, and that is, I don't see anything in the report that suggests what the overall budget might be. The rationale of 18,000 being contributed to this, the only thing I can see is that it's 50% of the current residual amount in the budget, so I'm wondering where the budget may be on this.
Yeah, my apologies.
Or the goal, if you will.
Yeah, my apologies, Worship, to you and council, there should be an overall one there, although what's the Parks Planner who is working on this with it? It'd be at least a minimum of more, 50% more of what's actually allocated there. The particular 18,000 is typically on things that the group can't go out and build or create on their own, particularly the playground equipment. So, the 18,000 is for that type of thing, particularly, and here, there's an aspect for playground update, upgrades on the zip line. So, it'd be those capital purchases where the group would be doing their fundraising. If you look at some of those, it would be the excavating, some of the paving, some of the other actual handling, work with the shelter, things like that.
Do we have any estimate on what the total project cost might be?
This will be over a few years with this one, but I would say it would be in excess of 60,000 than what's here right now, with all the volunteer work that would go into it.
Thank you very much. I don't see any, oh, Counselor Hong.
Thank you. Through you to staff. I know that this stuff takes time to do, and we commit to it. What about the other, you know, my question is, is we commit $18,000. Am I taking five years to spend $18,000? So, is there still a pool of money that doesn't get spent in this because the community can't make it, or they just felt like they stopped doing it and they only want to do so much? Is there reserves, or where does this money go until they use it up? Or if they don't use it up, do we take it back? And if we take it back, where does it go?
Go ahead.
Right, thank you, Counselor Hong. It would go back into, for instance, this group would keep it for a year or so in the budget. If they're not able to get it going, we would, we'd advise finance that those funds need to go back, at the time, they just determine if it goes back into the Parks and, the Volunteer in Park Fund, or if it just, if it just goes into, you know, back as an expense that wasn't incurred under the capital.
Okay, 'cause that was one of my questions, if, I feel that, you know, we're budgeting $50,000 next year for this, and if some of these projects don't go through, I can't see why we just don't keep that money in that specific reserve. So, when we have a big park that comes up that, hey, you know, three years ago, these people didn't do this park, so we have this money that we can add to it. Because we always allocate money to this expenditure every year, but it's the same amount. It never goes up if those people don't complete those projects. I'm hoping they all do complete the projects. It's great that they do. That means the money is put to good use. But if not, it'd be good that that money that we've already allocated and we've committed to this goes back into this reserve and not into general reserve, and not probably more reserves for finance guys.
Your Worship, if I could follow up. Right, majority of the times, I'd say 99% of the times, the groups are, when we get to this stage, sometimes we'll never get to this stage to council or to the commission, that the groups even to this point. So, majority of the times, they proceed. The few times that we'd have to bring it back, we'd let council know that there's more in the fund that we could allocate that year if other groups come forward. And one of the, one of the things I was going to mention about the Partners in Park Program, we're still putting some operating dollars into these and other things. The nice thing about this is that we're never building something that the neighborhood doesn't want. So, one of the real benefits here isn't so much even the funds going into it, although it's huge, it's that we do the process now, particularly on renovation parks, that we're not putting something in the community. The community's in the process of determining what it is they want to see, and they're a real part of it. So, we're not going in and actually putting a playground, when communities want a playground. So, on these redo parks or renovated parks, it's really, that's the process that we're using, the community engagement is ensure that any funds are used, be it through this funds or playground, general parks, playground, or general parks operating, is being used as the community would like to see it used.
Thank you.
Thank you. I see no further questions. I call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is correspondence, not related to report to council. And the first piece of correspondence is from the Nanaimo Recycling Exchange dated 2017 July 20th. Can we have a motion to receive the correspondence, please? Moved by Counselor Kip.
Seconded.
Seconded by Counselor Bestwick. Thank you. On the question of receiving?
If we receive it, are we going to discuss it, or are we going to receive it and move on?
Well, we can receive it, and then we can ask the question as whether there's any business arising from the correspondence.
And I'm comfortable to receive it.
Okay, thank you. Call the question, then. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Counselor Bestwick.
Thank you. Page three, or, well, the second page of the NRE's letter that was written on the July 20th asks that the Chair of the NRE Board of Directors and the Executive Director of the NRE respectfully request your renewed attention to the future of Nanaimo Recycling Exchange, and we have, and we request a date and time to meet to discuss a solution. I'm quite comfortable to make a motion that we respectfully set, refer this matter back to staff to set a date to meet with the, with the writer, with the author, at the earliest convenience.
Thank you. So, if that's a motion, Counselor Bestwick, then Counselor Kip is seconding that motion. Any discussion on that motion? Then I call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item is under delegations. The first one is Mr. Duarte Raptin to speak regarding a bill received from the City of Nanaimo for $91,087.87 to clear and tow three vehicles from 432 Howard Street. Okay, Mr. Raptin is not in the chambers. All right. The next item is Catherine Davis requesting review of the Street Entertainments Regulations Bylaw 2011, Number 7109.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Catherine Davis, and I-
You might find it a little more comfortable just pulling that down a little closer to you.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to go on the microphone, and then I'm going to come off, because that's going to be a very small part of my presentation. I'm now on the microphone. My name is Catherine Davis. I live in Nanaimo. I've lived here since 1984. Now, to what you said before I was on the microphone. When we speak over here, it's very difficult for the people on council and staff to hear me. It's even more difficult for the people about 75-
Please address us, ma'am.
Pardon?
Please address us.
I am addressing you. I'm just showing you an example. The council chambers are about 75 meters, and one of the issues that I have with the Street Entertainers Bylaw is that singers are not allowed to use a vocal mic. And I'm going to address Counselor Hong and ask him if any of his professional entertainers at any of his bars, on his stages, would be able to do a proper professional performance without a vocal microphone.
Not many, but I know some amazing women that can howl out some crazy tunes that you can hear about 100 meters away.
Awesome. So, the next thing I want to say is a very positive thing that happened this weekend. I want to congratulate Counselor Hong, Mr. Kim Smythe from the Chamber of Commerce, and Kevin Shaw for welcoming all buskers during the Bathtub Day special events. This is very progressive, because for years, we have not been welcomed. Now, my little prop over here, this is my suitcase. It's to show you that I'm not a bag lady. I'm a busker, but I'm not a homeless person or a panhandler. Now, to get to, what I want to say is this. In a perfect world, there would be no Street Entertainers Bylaw. My personal belief is that the city is not in the business of regulating art. We have a noise bylaw and a nuisance bylaw, as well as criminal statutes to deal with the problem people on the streets. 1998 was the year that the first bylaw, 5308, was proposed to regulate street entertainers. Why was this necessary? I've given each person on council three pages, which you don't have to read tonight, because I'm really hoping that after you read them, you will have a bylaw review. I believe that this bylaw was created to regulate panhandlers and not street entertainers, and here is why. I quote, "There is an increasing number of individuals performing on the street for donations of money, and as a result, an increased number of complaints received." The RCMP, the Nanaimo City Center Association, and city staff prepared a bylaw to regulate street entertainers. Staff of the day said that staff does not generally support implementing new regulations by the city that will probably add to taxpayer cost and bureaucracy. In this case, staff's concern about bureaucracy is somewhat offset by the participation of the Nanaimo City Center Association in the administration of its functions. Now, this again relates to the history of this bylaw. I believe that this bylaw was created because there were problem panhandlers on the street. Buskers, street entertainers are not, are not panhandlers. We aren't bag ladies, and we're not sleeping on your streets. The people that are playing on your streets are professional entertainers, and as such, we need the tools of our trade. In particular, for singers, we need a vocal microphone, because the main location, which is Troller's on Port Property, I cannot play there if the city-paid bagpiper is up top. I cannot play that location if there is another busker around the corner who has an electrified electric guitar, or a piano, or other so-called non-acoustical musical instruments. So, what I'm going to say is, we need to be progressive in 2017. It's almost 20 years since that bylaw was passed. I was on the committee in 1997 with the Nanaimo City Center Association, with the RCMP, with members of council, and with all other stakeholders that were involved. And I'm going to say one last thing before I introduce my colleague, Marty. We always talk about consultation, about bylaws and amendments to bylaws. In 2015, council made an amendment to a busker location right by Sirius Coffee, and there was no consultation. I have here an email from Mr. Rod Davidson, which says, "Let's send out the invite to everyone except Kathy Davis. Perhaps a second meeting with permit holders for input after our stakeholder meeting." That is not consultation. So, everything I've said to you tonight is in the bag. I have all of the minutes, all of the agendas, all of the meetings about busking from 1997 until 2016, and I really would love to see a review of this bylaw with proper consultation by all stakeholders, and most importantly, the buskers, because we are stakeholders. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Counselor Fuller has a question for you.
It's not so much a question, but I can confirm as a fact, it was either in 2000 or 2001, I was on the Nanaimo Alcohol and Drug Action Coalition. At the time, I was running House Emergency Shelter, and we were having a meeting, and the Downtown Nanaimo Partnership and city bylaws, I think it was Dave Nichols at the time, came to the meeting. And what the original bylaw had done was pretty much eliminate busking in town. And so, with that, aggressive panhandling started to happen, and it was bad. And so, they came in front of us and asked what they could do. And, you know, people spoke, and people spoke, and people spoke, and then finally it came to my turn, and I said, "What would you prefer? Buskers or panhandlers?" And the comment was, "Buskers." I says, "Well, there you go. There's your answer." And so, then another committee was formed with the DNP, and it took six months to get two buskers on that committee. So, no, I was on that committee as well. And the bylaw ended up the way it was. There are a lot of good things came out of it, but they were all turned down. They were never brought back. So, the council of the day got what they got, and they voted on it, and it was not perfect by any means. And I totally agree, we do need to revisit the busking bylaw. And I hope to revisit that one and a few others.
Thank you very much. Thank you, ma'am. See no further questions.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Motion to receive the delegation. Moved by Counselor Bestwick, seconded by Counselor Armstrong. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Next one is Mr. Marty Steele.
Good evening, sir. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Marty Steele, and I'm a regular street entertainer who performs at the harbor every year, and have done so for many years. By the way, I just renewed my license today. I would like to address some important issues as a member of the delegation that I'd like to discuss, but before I do, I'm just kind of probably repeating what Kathy said. I would like to say that street entertainers are a very important and integral part of the music scene in town. Victoria considers their entertainers so important to their city that they hold an annual festival for them. Sometimes we present the first image that many out-of-towners have of our beautiful city. I become highly offended that many people who live here are of the opinion that we are considered nothing more than panhandlers. I will gladly invite any critic down to the harbor to sing and/or perform on a musical instrument for two straight hours with a smile on their face, depending upon the generosity of the public. By saying this, the entertainer should at least consider their image that they present to the public. Now, for my issues. Number one, lack of bylaw officer enforcement. There are some street entertainers, who I will not name, that far exceed the two-hour limit that they perform on the spots. There are also those that are performing in spots not duly marked, or even perform without a license. We are not in the business of policing ourselves. That is not our responsibility. It's time for the bylaw officers to start doing their job and patrol the harbor. That's one of the reasons I think we pay our licensing fee. Number two, lack of spots on the harbor. At one time many years ago, there were six viable spots along the harbor. Now, there are only three. The ones removed were by the ice cream parlor in front of the lighthouse and in front of Pacifica condos. I am asking the city council to petition the port authority to reinstate at least two of those spots. Number three, the lack of an auditioning process, which was voted down during a council meeting, I'd say about five years ago, I was here. I understand the right of the street entertainer to perform as long as the license is displayed, but is there any way to renew a fair audition process? From that point, let the passersby decide the outcome of their efforts. Number four, the spot on the walkway that Kathy was referring to in front of Troller's is the only real viable spot in all of Nanaimo. The competition there is fierce. I would like to propose an additional $25 fee to make it a $50 licensing fee for that one spot only, with the rest of the spots in town only needing the normal $25 fee. That would be signified by a special mark or license, allowing for any performer who wishes to play there to be able to play at that one very important spot. Although I am a regularly performing musician, I take my street entertaining seriously. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much, sir. I see no questions. Counselor Yocum.
Thank you for your comments, sir. In a perfect, in a perfect environment, when there was a moderate updated bylaw, and I hear about the spot there by the fish and chips there, is there, would the buskers, if we had a proper, a proper system, would they be open to rotation?
There was a rotation a few years ago.
Okay.
Where there was alternating on and off days, and that was for all the spots in town, but that created too many problems. And so, what was allowed after the last time the busker issue was looked at, that every spot would be available every day, and furthermore, there would be no time constraint, no like 10 to 12, 12 to 2. That was, and by having that very narrow time constraints, it caused tremendous arguments, especially down at the harbor. So, what happened was, is that they allowed anybody to start anytime, but they only had two hours to perform, and they couldn't come back to the spot for the rest of the day. And that's true of any spot in town. When you play for two hours, even if you go down to where they sell their crafts, or Maffei O'Sutton, any spot, once you're at that spot and you play for two hours, you cannot reappear at that same spot until the next day. And that's what, that's what, that's what happened about four or five years ago. And it's pretty well, it's been pretty well followed. You know, there's always glitches, but what I'm seeing down there is that there are performers who continue to insist on performing in places they're not supposed to. Like, for example, in front of the lighthouse. You know, I shouldn't be the bad guy to go up to them and say, even though I know they're trying to perform, they say, "I'm sorry, you can't work, you can't busker. This is not a spot." You know, that's not my job. That's the bylaw officer's job. But I have seen that a lot this year. Many, there are, there are some buskers who just refuse to honor the spots, and that's why I put the point down about trying to legitimately get a couple more spots on the harbor.
Can I have a supplemental question, please? Thank you for your answer, sir. What's the rationale as a professional busker for just a two-hour window? Because to me, that's not a very big window.
That's more than fair.
Is that enough?
Much more than fair.
Is it two hours?
Yes, I'll tell you why. Because this is a short busking season, okay? And right now, the time to busk is 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM. 12 hours, that's it. So, only six buskers, and that can perform, and that's, you know, June, July, when the days are longest. Once August and September comes around and it starts getting colder, the hours are going to shrink quite a bit, you know? One hour is not enough. Four hours, there used to be a four-hour limit, but there were a lot more spots. So, if somebody was there, it wasn't as big a problem to spend four hours, because there were many other spots to choose from, okay? With the dearth of spots, we're stuck. Two hours, that's it, you know? It's, you know, let me tell you something. If you get out there and you play for two hours, you're pretty well exhausted after that. You know what it's like, Jerry?
Yeah.
You know, owning the queens and having your musicians be up there three, four hours at a time? Most of those guys could hardly stand after their night's over.
So, I'm sort of perplexed, well, I'm not perplexed, but, so is it two hours at a ti- and I pardon my ignorance, by the way, on this subject.
No, 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 believe me.
So, so, is it two hour, is it two hour at a time? Or is there, can you go refresh and come back? Is it a two-hour max? and come back? Is it a two-hour max per day?
Two-hour max, period.
Okay, I'm clear.
Within the two hours, if you want to take a break, that's all your concern. But that is two hours on the clock, like 12:30 to 2:00. What you do with it is your time.
All right, thank you.
Okay?
Thank you very much. Counselor Hong.
Thank you. Thanks, Marty. So you would like to see a scheduling system reintroduced?
No.
Well, I mean...
No, the only thing I'm asking for is opening up some spots. Leave the time alone. It's worked out perfect.
Well, no, not the hour as time, but your slots. So you would like actually a reservation system? So you say like, "I'm gonna be here."
Well, the reservation system is gonna open up a can of worms.
Okay.
No chance.
So you want first come, first served? So my...
First come, first served. Two hours, more spots. That gives more people the opportunity to busk. There's very limited, you know, many of us, I refuse to busk downtown, not with the gear that I carry. And I won't busk in Mafaeo Sutton. There's 10 spots, and the traffic there is negligible. You know, and, you know, I don't like to have to, you know, to concentrate on the harbor, but, you know, it's reality. That's the spot. That's where the tourists walk. That's where the boaters walk. That's where people eat their meals and have their snacks. And it's packed in the evening and early afternoon, you know? And it's prime opportunity for the busker to display their ability at that very spot, and it's safe. You've got the Warfinger office there. You've got our CMP sometimes. The fire rescue comes around once in a while, and it is safe. We are not, if there are panhandlers around, they are chased off very quickly by the Warfingers office. So there's a measure of safety for the busker. If I were to go downtown to busk, there is no such provision for safety. And that only provision can only be done with the bylaw officer being out there, you know? And I really have a hard time with a straight panhandler, you know? Being a professional street entertainer, at least we're offering a service. We're not out there begging for coin and not giving something in return. We're providing our talent and abilities, you know, and we're not, and we're not allowed to ask for tips, ever. We just play, we perform, we smile, we talk to people, but we are never asked or have, we can have a sign that says tips, but we are never allowed to aggressively ask for a tip.
Okay. So, thanks. So what I wanted to follow up on that is, if the buskers are interested in times, locations, because I know that, then you can let people know where you're gonna be performing. We have that with the food truck. We have the technology so to slot you guys in to make it work. I don't, I haven't seen how, we haven't got a staff update yet on how the food truck slotting is working, but there is the ability for us to have those slots so that when, or if, whatever, maybe it is gonna be better than the food trucks, that we can actually promote the buskers in the spots. If someone wants to see where Marty is playing or where Catherine is playing, they can look on the calendar.
It's a, it's a, it's a really nice idea, but it has to be, the spots have to be extended a little bit. You have to get the port authority in on this. They have to agree. And somehow, they've got to be able to mollify whatever complaints that, let's say, Pacifica condos has, you know, or the ice cream parlor has, you know? There are new owners. There are new people, you know? New, no management at the lighthouse, you know, new this and that, and they're worried about their business, which I understand. But those spots existed long before there was new management.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right.
Counselor Yocum.
Nope, sir.
Counselor Fuller.
I totally get what you're talking about with the two-hour slots. It is, for what it is, it is a good system. It's a first come, first served, and that way, one person can't book all of the spots ahead of time.
That's right.
And have that good spot every day at three or four or five in the afternoon.
That's right.
So the, the additional spots is definitely a need. It's a huge need. And I went to a meeting, it was probably five or seven years ago, it was in this building, and it was with regards to the busking bylaw, and in particular about the spot in front of Pacifica. And one person came out and spoke against it from Pacifica. He had moved here from Victoria, where there was a busker right in front of his condominium, moved here, bought a condominium, knowing full well there was a busking spot in front of it. Then he complained about it, and it was pulled off of the, yeah, just because of the people in the building.
And it was one person?
Yeah. That's my understanding. It was only one person showed up at that meeting to complain about it. Yeah.
That is a great safety valve spot.
It's, it's, that is the most fantastic spot. That is where your groups could be.
That's right.
You could have your fire dancers, your whatever. That is a fantastic spot.
I don't know how you can pull it off, but that spot would be so critical if that were to be reinstated, more than any other spots.
Well, and Mafaeo Sutton, I think, could use a couple others as well.
Yes.
And Counselor Hong had a good point about the food trucks. Mafaeo Sutton, they're not working well there because they're not near where the people are.
That's right.
It's like putting a busking spot away from where people are. You're putting a food truck away from where people are. So once we can get that adjusted, we get more people coming down. You have more busking spots. That draws more people, and so on and so on and so forth.
Well, the buskers can't bring the people, but the food trucks can.
Ah, but if there's good buskers, they draw people. Victoria is a good example of that. Their waterfront.
Oh.
Yeah.
I take my wife down to the harbor with me once in a while, and I see the crowd there, and I see the crowd on the harbor. It's not a contest.
Yeah.
Everybody loves to walk on the harbor. It is our prime spot. You know, it sells the city.
Totally.
Thank you very much, sir. I see no further questions.
No.
Motion to receive the delegation. Moved by Counselor Beswick, seconded by Counselor Hong. All is in favor. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir. Next item, Mr. Leon Cake.
Thank you, Mayor McKay. Leon Cake, 5936 Schooner Way. I'm gonna speak to the 12B on your delegations today. It's about 432 Howard Avenue. I'm speaking of this property in regards to this issue regarding the building of this property. I'm not related to this man whatsoever. Never, I met him once in my life. He's a Harwood guy, so I always seem to get detached to Harwood people. And I just want to go through the process that has been used by the city in regards to this property and the arrival of this $91,000 bill for contamination on his property and cleanup. So like I said, I don't know this person. I'm not related to him. I'm just speaking as a citizen. I'm just gonna walk the city through a little bit of history here, and then I'll go to the question, Mayor McKay, because I know you're gonna ask me for the question. It's at the end. 432 Howard Avenue, it's all started May 16, 2011. So this property's had things going on since 2011. Now, I'll just refer to some of the council updates. October 3, 2016, it was on the council agenda. June 13, 2016, it was on the council agenda. I spoke to council on this during question period, January 16, 2017, and I think quite a few of you were here, in regards to this poor fellow's taking free soil that turned out to be contaminated. And I addressed it to council as, how would everyone feel if they got a bill in the mail for $30,000 or $40,000? At that time, that was the discussion on removing the soil and having it dealt with as a contaminated soil removal. Now we see the bill to be $91,000 plus $5,000 removals from cars. I did go to that property the next day after I spoke to council about it and started getting a little involved in talking to the tenant. The landowner wasn't around at the time. I think he was in Vancouver. So I've been researching quite a bit about contaminated soil. I've been reading all the city's bylaws. Personally, I think they need to be revisited. I pointed that out when I was here before. I'm not the smartest person in the world, but when I read some of these things and I see some of the loopholes, the language always hurts people, and I think it's important that we make good language. So in regards to this, I'm gonna refer to, there was an RFP done for this, pardon me, an RFQ. And it was issued February 9, 2017, and it was totally in regards to this property. Now, council has addressed this, as I said, three or four different times. Each time in it being presented to you, it was only one time the word contaminated soil was in what you guys passed as going forward. It was things like mattresses, you know, debris, you know, bed springs, this kind of stuff. So obviously, this property's been, like I said, since 2011. So the question I have is, under this RFQ that was used for the city to go onto this man's property and do the cleanup, on page five of the request for quotations, and understanding now the provincial legislation for contaminated soil removal, there's a lot of language, there's a lot of documents, there's a lot of things that you have to make sure that you do. So when I look at what the city did in this contract and how it went out for the RFQ, under the fill permit, and I'll read it, it says, "The city memo fill permit for the removal of the contaminated soil must be obtained prior to the removal from the city's development, engineering, and environmental department." Now, in the case of that there, that was the first problem we had on this property. So the question I have to Mayor McKay, and I don't know, I don't see anybody from engineering, was there a CSRA done for the removal of the soil? Because it came from a location where, if it had been done there, this would have never moved through our city, onto this man's property. And like I said, I know this man's had issues, but in regards to contaminated soil movement in the city, I'm very concerned about it because we paid a big bill down on Wall Street. And just so everyone knows, a CSRA is a contaminated soil relocation agreement. So I asked the city, in the language of this contract that was awarded to whoever did this removal of the soil, did they take this CSRA out? Because we asked for a fill permit in this RFQ. If this is what we did, we broke the law ourselves, going onto this property to remove this contaminated soil. How did we get to 91,000? I visited the site. I don't know how we got to $91,000 for two piles of dirt that was, that were tart. If we had been really considerate of the citizen, we would have done the same thing that we did down on Wall Street. We would have just leveled it and paved it and called, "Don't tell anybody that there's contaminated soil under here." We could have capped, we could advise this citizen to pave his property. Just pave your whole yard, because it would be far less than a $91,000 bill that he's got right now. And I'll be upset if this council doesn't take an initiative to help this man, because he was before you guys, May 1. Counselor Brennan, on that, on May 1, made the comment about, the reason why we do some of the things we do is to register against the property, okay? Register so the next person doesn't inherit these situations. Well, I commend her for that. So now, let's use the same language on how that soil got from a site to an innocent home's property. We have no, we have nothing that stopped that from happening. So we didn't protect this man. So a $91,000 bill, $5,000 to remove three cars, it costs between, and I checked this out, between $300 and $500 to move a car in the city of Nanaimo by a tow truck operator, taking it away as junk. He's got a bill for $5,000. So the question I have again is, did we follow the proper provincial protocol? And if we didn't, how can we ask this man to pay for a $91,000 bill when we don't even, we don't even follow the provincial rules to make sure that maybe there was an opportunity to look at the soil again? Because who identified this? Who said this was contaminated? Where's the reports? You have to register this, like we were supposed to do on Wall Street. We did register that contaminated site. It was not on the registry. How can anybody here on council sit here and watch this man get stuck with a $91,000 bill for two piles of contaminated soil, which, to me, when I went there and visited the site after I found out this RFQ had been awarded, because it was on the city website for a long time, then the work was done, and I don't even know, even states to this day that it was awarded. This citizen has, as far as I'm concerned, had an injustice done to him. He's like a person that just was thinking that, "Oh, I've got some fill for my property." And yes, he's got issues on the development of that home. There's no doubt you can see that. But I'm not speaking to anything to do with permits or codes or violations. I'm speaking to the movement of contaminated soil in the city of Nanaimo that ended up like this, that we make sure it can never happen again to anybody. We need to tighten up the bylaw. We need to tighten up the language, and maybe we're working on that? I don't know. But nobody sitting here can allow this man to be stuck with a $96,000 bill. Shame on you if you do. That's all I gotta say. Because it's upsetting to me, because my mom's best friend, Dorothy Anderson, lived right across the street. I know that area really well since I was five years old. It's sad that a person thought he was gonna build his future home, depending on what he's doing right today with that property. But $96,000 will be on his taxes in three years from now. It has been on the tax sale before. That property's been on the tax sale before. Whoever's owned that property has always struggled. So I asked council, you know, his terminology in his report to council, I'm surprised that the man didn't come tonight, but I did watch May 1. He was very emotional. His mother had died, I think, his sister, a lot of issues going on. But he asked the city to eat it. So think about that language. If he wrote a letter that said to the city, "Could you eat that and I'll pay the $5,000 bill?" Kind of tells you what, what I think is needed to be done to help this man. I hope you all look at each other and realize, none of you could afford a $96,000 bill for getting something for free. Thank you.
Counselor Kip, you got questions?
Well, yeah, the question, the statement. I can't believe we can get a tax receipt for towing a junker away. You can get a tax receipt. So three cars for $5,000 is extraordinarily expensive. I don't know why we would even accept that as a price as the city when we can get them through. So that is a concern to me. And I went up and visited the site with you, Mr. Cake, and to me, it's astounding. And I want to know, you talked about the receiving site, and it's not mentioned anywhere. That's not a receiving site. So I don't have a question for Mr. Cake now. I don't have anything for Mr. Cake. I have a question for staff.
Well, that soil was supposed to go to the yard and landfill. That's what was in the RFQ. The language in the RFQ was very expensive. It was all by city wages. It was stated in that RFQ, everything that you had to pay. You couldn't pay $15 an hour people to help remove that contaminated soil, even if they were trained and experts. You had to pay the city levels of payment. All the things were broken out. We basically made sure whoever got that RFQ, that they follow the rules of the city, and I understand we have to follow rules, but those rules costed that man very dearly. But $91,000, there's not one person here can prove to me after 44 years watching soil come and go off of job sites, especially contaminated soil. $91,000. If it stops here today and it just goes on its taxes in three years, all you guys are elected or non-elected. You make sure you guys deal with this now. This is wrong. It's an injustice to this man. Nobody, nobody deserves this. Thank you.
Counselor Hong.
Were you here when council extended it for him?
Yes.
So he actually had...
That was May 1. Sorry, Jerry. I wasn't here. I watched the video on the agenda. I watched it.
Yeah. As a last resort for council, we don't want to be doing this. I think our staff have way better things to do, and I hate paying staff time to be dealing with this. When we gave the homeowner the opportunity to do it himself.
For the home. For the home. The deficiencies that were being identified, like I said, if you go back, and I got a binder full here.
Well, no, we actually, we had choice for him to do the dirt too, and he kept giving us an excuse that, "Oh, it's raining. Oh, I can't do it now. It's muddy," and this. But he was never gonna be able, he had to hire somebody. Yeah.
$30,000. I'll give it to you. February 9, 2017, the RFQ was issued, May 1, January, February, March, April, May. May 1, it was asked of council to authorize to proceed with the registration of a bylaw on prevention notice of the property titled in 432 Howard Avenue. What you voted for that date, I'm sorry, I got one over here, was this, but the wording was based around mattresses. There was nothing mentioned about a car, cars at all. It was basically saying the deficiencies, because he's got deficiencies, you can see when you go there, there's definitely some struggles. But the contaminated soil should never have gotten onto his property. It should never have moved in the city. Where was the bylaw? Where was the permits? Where was the inspections from the site that it came from that had traveled through our city and got onto his property? So what you voted for, if you go back and look at your minutes, you voted for those kind of things. The mattresses, this junk stuff, the, you know, washing machine. Contaminated soil was once identified in a word to yourselves as council. Contaminated soil was once identified in a word to yourselves as council. And then the RFQ come out, totally identifying contaminated soil. Five, six, seven pages of lots of language, had the city's wages included and everything else, and, and then of course, whoever got the contract, because it wasn't open in public, which I have a real problem with, we do an RFQ to remove soil, but we go and put it and close doors, and then we look at it and say, "Oh, well, this looks pretty good. It's gonna cost the guy, oh, it's gonna cost him when we're finished." No price tag, just units. Then we get to ninety-one thousand dollars. It's on his taxes. This guy's gonna lose his home in three years. There's not a hope in hell, a hope this guy's gonna be able to afford this. That's what you gotta think about. Put yourself in those shoes.
Counselor Kip.
Well, I'd move receipt to the delegation, there's no further questions to the delegation.
Counselor Armstrong, you have a question for the delegation?
I can answer this, not Mr. McKay, but I'm just wondering, whose responsibility is it to ensure that the CSRA was done? Is it you as the landlord that's taking that?
Can't move contaminated soil without taking it out.
Pardon me?
You cannot move contaminated soil unless you take it out. And if you go onto--
But whose responsibility is that to ensure that's done?
Whoever's gonna move the soil. It's in our city, it's in our city, if you look at our city bylaw--
provincial--
Okay?
No, just my question is, is that should he not have made sure that that was done himself?
Do you know what he bought soil?
No, that's why I'm asking.
He said, "Here, I got a bucket loaded soil for you." Would you say, "Can I test it, Liam, because it's contaminated, I'm not sure?" He took the soil because the sign said free fill. The buck stops there.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Yocum.
Thank you, Mr. Cake, I hear what you're saying with utmost respect. In this situation, or any situation, I actually believe that's some accountability where the sale came from, because the independent, the individual, to me, was misled, and there's always somebody out there, for, I don't have a good example, so I won't try to give a good example, but there has to be, there has to be some accountability absolutely by the person that took this, that received the soil. I remember, I remember that one evening, the gentleman wouldn't share where the sale came from. This is about three meetings ago on the subject. But nevertheless, the person that offloaded the soil to this person that they, I don't wanna say a sucker, but should be accountable, because they knew darn right that there was accountable, there was probably contaminated soil, and they would have knew there was contaminated soil from their project, their site, wherever it came from. So, again, I mean, a subject matter on this, an expert on this neither, either, would the city have a bylaw, or do we have a bylaw, I guess this is more the staff, on accountability of sites where it comes from? I'm sort of rambling here, but I wanted to say, there has to be accountability offloading, to me, it was offloaded.
Two pages.
Thank you.
Soil field removal depositing to and for from your property regarding contaminated soil, two pages. The ministry has hundreds of pages identifying--
So, so to wrap up my babbling, do we know where this soil ever came from, end of the day?
The soil came from just up from City Hall-- Just before the train tracks, in the multi-unit on, what's it, Franklin Street?
Vivo.
Vivo. It came from, it was under building permit, there was city staff on the site, and it's one department not talking to another department, or one department overwhelming another department when soil's getting moved around. Soil should have never arrived in our park, and that soil should have never left that site and arrived at that man's house. This is a travesty. This should have been stopped. It's right next to the train tracks. And what do you call hazardous material, hazardous soil? Has it got PCBs? What's it recognized as? Has it got just some, some calcium in it? What has it got? So we're getting these reports, and they're coming at us. I mean, you can't move the soil, I told you guys that. I've told you a couple times about the dirty soil, and no one seems to catch on. November was the park soil, our unanimous motion, on four yes or no questions. We still haven't got an answer. This is a travesty. The building inspection department should be held accountable for allowing that soil to move without one of our standards. That's what's happening here, folks. Mr. Cake is coming forward, he's the only one sticking up for this guy, or coming forward with some of these issues. And this is, to me, is a travesty. I'm tiring of this.
Sorry, Jim. This was the RFQ, removal of contaminated soils and various materials. Identified, like I said, each time you guys were looking at reports from staff and you were making motions to go forward with the bylaw and, you know, and basically go after this guy, things like mattresses, bedding, disregarded, discarded furniture, household garbage, miscellaneous debris. This clearly identifies the removal of that contaminated soil. Big wacklers. Because I'll say this, does anybody believe that this man would drive past the site, see free fill, walk up and say, "What is it? Oh, it's totally contaminated. Oh, can I have it?" No, I don't think so. That's--
It's not his responsibility, Mr. Cake, and getting to Counselor Armstrong's point, the responsibility of those people that built the place up there--
Can we have one more time, please?
This is crazy. Your worship, that soil should have not left that site, and those are multimillionaires building that property. How many units are on there? And I asked how long ago, I asked how long ago, why that soil was moved? Months ago, never got an answer.
Can we have a motion to receive the delegation, please?
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Kip, seconded by, seconded by Counselor Bestwick, all those in favor. Opposed, motion carries.
I'm gonna give a motion, notice of motion, I'm gonna ask for an investigation on contaminated soils.
Counselor Kip, you don't have the mic any longer. Counselor Fuller.
I find this whole thing very interesting, because, you know, you have a house from the fifties, the sixties, you want to do renovations, you check to make sure there's no asbestos. If there is, you deal with it. You want to do a development by a railway track in a semi-industrial area from the past, you're gonna be digging dirt, you check. How did we know that soil was contaminated? If we knew that soil was contaminated before it was moved, then we would be responsible. If the owner of that property knew that soil was contaminated and allowed it to be removed without it going through the proper means, then the owner should be responsible, and we should be looking into that. And if there is a ninety thousand dollar bill, the appropriate person, or persons, or businesses, or business, should be paying for that.
Counselor Bestwick.
Thank you. This is a pretty devastating situation, but this is, tonight is the first time that I've heard where the soil came from. So in all of these deliberations, and all of these conversations that we've had with the receiver of this soil, this is the first time that it's been disclosed, at least to me, to my knowledge, where it came from. And where it came from, and how it left there, is responsible to dispose of their soil, their property. So they dug a hole to build their building. They left the soil on their site. They had to get rid of the soil. I don't know how it gets from one place to another, whether it's tested or not tested, or who's responsible or not. I don't know. And I would say that the majority of the people in this room, without a certificate and something, would know. So I certainly don't know. And usually, you get alerted to something, and then you ask people to comply, when somebody says that, hey, that, you know that that soil's contaminated, or you know that that person is playing over the extended hours of ten PM, you know that those buskers aren't supposed to be there. We usually don't do anything until there's a non-compliance. And if you don't know what non-compliance for the soil that was on that property, I don't know, was it covered at the Vivo site forever? Well, I don't know. So, well, I'm extremely sympathetic for the situation, and I don't know who's responsible for the soil that was sitting there when the hole was dug and then piled in a pile, how it got where it got to, and who should have stopped it, or who should have okayed it, or who, whatever. I don't know. And I would have no way to know that. I can drive around this entire city and see piles of dirt all over the place. I don't, I don't know if it's contaminated or not, and if it gets moved, am I responsible for it being moved? If I am, then I'm sorry, I'll take my, my eleven point one percent responsibility. But somehow, the soil from its origin should not have been permitted to be transported if at the time, people knew that it was contaminated. So it's a very unfortunate and very complex situation, obviously, and I, and I don't know at this point in time, other than preventing it from happening again somehow, what to do about this situation. And I'll certainly need time to think about it. Thank you.
Counselor Kip, you are on the list, but I'd like to get to first timers, if we could. Counselor Armstrong.
Just a question on that, too. Would you not think that he possibly has civil remedy to go after the people that sold him that? That's just a question I would think, should we be looking at? Like, if, if rules weren't followed, you always have civil recourse. I don't know if that would fall into this, but, you know, like, is it the city's responsibility to ensure? I don't know, that's something I would like to have answered. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you. Ms. Samra.
Your worship, the information provided this evening raises jurisdictional and regulatory issues, and Counsel Armstrong's quite right, it requires a look at, an investigation, and staff has prepared a summary of the steps that were taken, but this conversation does raise some jurisdictional and liability issues for, for staff to look at, but as part of this, we're being given information, but we'd have to investigate to verify the sequence of events and be able to verify where soil came from and where it was shipped to, so this would require some additional work before we're able to respond fulsome. This is the second time contaminated soil has come up in the last year. Counselor Kip is quite white, he has a couple questions on, on the books that we're taking a look into. Now that I'm back in the office, and this has come to light, I'll be working with staff to look at our different processes, because it does raise, Mr. Cake raised procurement issues, RFP issues, it's a whole range of things that have been pro, and whether or not they're correct or not is something that I need to take a look at. I know that staff do follow what we have, so I'm not going to, I require some time to go away and take a look at this, and be able to come report back with the information and the facts to council, before I'm able to make any recommendations to you about, about this file and the other contaminated soil file.
Thank you very much. I'd like to just add that, that on that matter, we've got, when, when, when somebody takes out a permit to haul away refuse, whether it be dirt, soil, or construction and demolition waste, we've got to do a better job of figuring out that they actually did what they said they're gonna do with it. We've got examples in the demolition business where, where waste is, where a permit is being, is being sought to demolish a building, where the landowner goes through the trouble to give us the impression that they're going to do right by that material, that they're going to dispose of it where it needs to be disposed of. They even got, there was, there was one property on Victoria Avenue, or pardon me, Vancouver Avenue, where they brought in a reputable demolition company to collect up all the waste. And when they came in on the Monday morning, his containers were empty, but there was no building there. And we found out later that that building had been hauled out to cedar and burned on the weekend. Yet they brought, they took out all the permits that they were supposed to have brought out, or had taken out. We, I think we've got to do, I think Mr. Cake brings up a really good point, that, that before anything moves off of a property, that we have to ensure that we know the regulatory bodies where it's going, and that it went where the owner of the material said it was gonna go. Thank you. Counselor Hung.
Thank you. I'll make it quick, but I just wanted to clarify what not clarify, but I actually wanted to commend staff, that they took out an RFQ even before it came to council. Because you know what? It's contaminated soil. Once staff knew it was contaminated, if I was the neighbor, get that crap off of that property before it leaches onto mine, and then what am I gonna do? If I'm the neighbor, sue the city? Sue the guy next to me? Kudos to staff. Because you know what? They did their job once they knew about it. It's our responsibility. So the person next to them, if the neighbor tests their property and says, "Hey, there's contaminated soil here," city knew about it, why didn't you do anything about it? Kudos for staff for putting an RFQ out before it was needed. Kudos to staff. I don't care what the cost of this issue is, but for the surrounding neighbors, when we identify a problem, it's our responsibility then, and we have to do it. We don't want to do it. We give the property owner the option to do it. We're the last resort, and we keep telling people that. That's why we give them extensions. Every time they come here, we give them an extension in hopes that they do it and not us. So I just wanted to say that, good for staff, it's contaminated soil, get it off the property. Thank you.
Counselor Kip.
Well, I miss your logic, Counselor Hung. I'm missing your logic, because we broke a rule when it come off a site, and the city staff should be aware of it. We've got hundreds of people out there driving around in trucks every day, thousands, part-time employees or whatever. So I miss your logic on that. So every mattress in town that we hear about, because we reported originally on this, it was mattresses and stuff, right? And some jiprock under the soil, which is tough. So I miss your logic. That means every mattress laying out there right now, every person's jip owning it's a hazardous material and we should get rid of it. Identify to me what the hazard was. Tell me the hazard and the risk. Our community has a right to know every hazard and every risk we face, emergency plan, whatever. And this soil, how toxic was it? Our own staff has broke rules. We put toxic soil, hazardous soil, in a riparian area and dealt with it. What, when's that gonna get answered? I asked that question, too, why that soil was in the riparian area? If we can't take out a receiving area permit for our own soil, how can we expect this not rich, as Counselor Armstrong said, or maybe he should sue? If you looked at his place, if you went by there, he ain't got a penny to pinch. Hardly, he doesn't even live there, he rents it. So my point of view is, the mistakes are being made, they're dragged on, there's no accountability to saying, and when someone comes up to me and says, "Oh, well, this was a mistake that it moved from this property," and, boom, great for staff that they caught it now for a ninety thousand dollar bill, three cars for five thousand bucks, and you say, "That's good work?" I can't agree with that. This needs to be investigated, how our city handles hazardous material. Look at this site on the, the event center. Capping is a good idea. Did we, did we prep that site where we had soil? Is this site now prepped and safe? Do we know? Did it rain? Did it leach? Are we running samples? What, what was the hazardous soil? What was it identified as? And was it identified, this guy was a target, and this is just piling stuff on him? What was it? So there isn't enough information. But I actually went out to the site and seen it, and I can't believe there's ninety thousand bucks worth of soil there. I'm still looking for the pictures I took of the site. I mean, that, what, show me, I mean, I always get caught on this operational thing, operation versus governance, but I'm observing, I'm constantly observing operations that really concern me. And when I bring them forward to this council as a council issue, I don't even get a response from most of you. None of you have cared about that soil in the park as much as I have, or Mr. Cake, none of you. And that's disheartening.
Your worship, I would just ask that we, we go with what Ms. Samra has suggested with an investigation before we go on to any wrongdoings--
Investigation costs more money, we know what's happened, we know what's missing.
Counselor, Counselor--
Point of order, I have put what's missing in front of the council on this, and you're not willing to operate on it, on another investigation, you know--
Counselor Kip, Ms. Gury has the floor.
Sorry, your worship, through you to Counselor Kip, who's leaving, I thought that's what he had requested, was an investigation into this matter, and I just wanted the conversation of wrongdoing of staff to not carry on. Thanks.
Thank you. So what I would like to do is, I would--
So what I would like to do is, I would like to, Ms. Gurry, has this delegation been received? Thank you.
Your worship.
I would like to then ask for business arising from the delegations.
Yeah.
Ms. Gurry.
No, Ms.
Or Ms. Samra.
Ms. Samra, I have had my request to speak on for a bit, and Ms. Gurry, thank you for jumping into the conversation. I was being diplomatic earlier, saying that jurisdictional and regulatory issues have been raised and allegations and statements have been made, but without an investigation and verification of facts in front of us, going that additional step of saying staff is engaged in any wrongdoing isn't sustained by the evidentiary record at this point in time. And these are serious allegations that have been before this council more than once, and they require internal investigations to take a look at it, because we're looking at serious allegations about the city's conduct and our various departments that need to be taken a look at. So I just really want to make that clear, that I'm not in a position, nor am I prepared to suggest that my staff have failed to follow processes or engaged in wrongdoing at this point in time. And I ask that you respect my ability as a city manager to go back and investigate this. I do take it seriously. I understand that there has been a delay in doing some of the investigations, but it certainly can go forward on an expedited basis, and we can come back with some recommendations so that we can address the matter that's been put before this council.
Thank you very much. Is there any other business arising from the delegations? Counselor Armstrong.
I'm just wondering, is it possible to put it to a motion that it does go back to staff for further information before we proceed?
That would be a proper motion, yes.
That's what I would like to do.
Counselor Fuller. Call the question, all those in favor. Opposed?
Counselor Kip proposed.
Counselor Kip proposed. Thank you. Motion passes. Counselor Beswick.
I was just going to speak to the situation, listening to Ms. Samra indicate that an investigation, if you will, fact gathering, data, information, and the timeliness of same. And I recognize that we've made a motion, and now we've passed it, to proceed accordingly. But I was just concerned that, from a timing perspective, how, and I know it's hard off the fly to say, well, this is going to take me a week or two weeks or, you know, two months, I don't know. I just wanted to have that conversation, but it's out of our hands now. I'll move over to staff. Thank you.
Mr. McCray.
Thank you, your worship. In reviewing the matters that I have in front of me, along with the majority of the information we've collected, to Counselor Beswick, it should take no later than 30 days to have this report back in front of council.
Thank you. Are there any other, is there any other business arising from the delegations? I would like to address the issue that Ms. Davis brings forward, and that is bylaw 2011 number 7109. And that is, I think we've come a long way since 2011. I think there's been some change in dynamics. I think that, I think that Mr. Steele was probably correct when he talked about the lands out in front of, out in front of Pacifica. You know, I heard from people that lived in Pacifica that they didn't feel like they were being consulted. And in fact, they leased that land that sticks out there for $40,000 a year from the Port Authority. So I would think if I leased land, then I would want to have a say, and I just don't get the impression they had a say. I think it's time that we did review the busker bylaw. Ms. Davis's son has, had a restaurant up on, up on Commercial, and there was, there were times when there were buskers there at an unauthorized spot, and they added some significant ambiance to the area. But people were, they were, they were being chased off because they weren't on a proper spot. It seemed to be an opportune spot. We're seeing, we're seeing restaurants in other municipalities in downtown locations that are, that are actually hiring buskers to play out in front of their place. They have got, they'll split with the place next door, a couple of restaurants will split a couple of hours worth of music. We should be able to allow that. You know, I've talked to Ms. Davis about this an awful lot, and I'd like to, not tomorrow, not the next day, but I would like to put it on the books that we review bylaw 2011 number 7109. If I can get a second there. Thank you. Counselor Fuller, any discussion? Counselor Yoke.
Absolutely. Question I have regards to, I'd like to see a committee made up or review, however, review it and modernize it, but if I heard the gentleman state is not being enforced, some of the stuff not being enforced. So what's down on the Port Authority lands, is it, do they pitch in for bylaw enforcement? Which I know they don't, but so, can we get a way to help them pitch in for the bylaw enforcement?
I'm not going to speak for staff, but it's my understanding that we have agreed to do the bylaw enforcement on the port lands. The port has conversely agreed to allow busking on their lands.
So they get off of basically no dimes? So basically, that's an easy deal for them? So we should, they should bring something to the table? Because, but that's a conversation this, you have in this committee.
There were some great ideas that came forward. I'd love to, I'd love to review the bylaw. Thank you. So I'm going to call the question, all those in favor. Opposed? Motion carries. Question period. Meeting number two.
My name is Fred Taylor up in Nanaimo. In all this conversation about contaminated soil.
We can't hear you, Mr. Taylor.
Turn on the mic.
The mic is on, sir. You need to step closer to it and speak louder.
With all this conversation about contaminated soil, I would like to raise a red flag or whatever you might want to call it, because recently and a few years ago, contaminated soil was being hauled to Duke Point onto property.
Do you have a question, sir?
And would you please have a serious look at our zoning bylaw? Because it was allowed, because it said storage as a use, and we, they can get by with bringing contaminated soil into our city because it's called storage under the zoning, which is stupid.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
My name's Bill Manners from Nanaimo.
Thank you.
My question is relating to the busking issue, and that is, are you aware that all of the spots that were selected for busking or street entertainment were selected based on the response of businesses and residents that were in the areas? For example, the ice cream shop did not want buskers because it affected their business. At the time, graphic jurors did not want buskers because it affected their business. You mentioned earlier about the residents owning, at the Pacifica owning the property in front.
Not owning, sir.
Beg your pardon?
Not owning, sir. Leasing.
Leasing. So they should be consulted, as you suggested. But I just wanted to ask, is council aware that there was a lot of thought that went into those spots?
Oh, I, from the sidelines, I watched it and know there was a lot of thought that was put into it. But times have changed, and things haven't worked out as well as everybody had hoped. Although they were all, all the regulations were made with the best of intentions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Don Bonner from Nanaimo, thank you very much for passing that motion regarding busking. I was going to inquire about that. My question regarding busking is, how often does the bylaw patrol officer patrol that area to see if buskers are staying within their two-hour limit?
I can't answer that question. Can staff answer that question? Mr. McCray.
So, your worship, I can't answer a statistical question like that. I can always look into what our patrols look like in saying that our bylaw officers are involved in parking nuisance enforcement, et cetera, et cetera. So it's not something that is done all the time.
Can we, can we get an answer for Mr. Bonner?
Thank you, your worship. It's something that I don't think I'm going to be able to be able to quantify.
My next question is regarding Robert's rules of order, so which just happened recently. Your worship, you're aware of what a point of order is, correct?
Yes.
When a point of order is made, why do you not ask the person to say what the point of order is? So that you can then vote on whether or not it's a point of order.
So, thank you very much for that, sir. We're doing, we're spending a lot of time working with the clerk on procedure right now, so I'll take that under advisement. Thank you, sir.
Because point of order, it doesn't mean you stop talking.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, okay, thank you. My next question, it's regarding decorum. You're not reading the decorum rules anymore, I noticed. My question, you know, I'm trying to read, I'm trying to verse this in the form of a question. Is it your opinion, sir, that the outburst by Counselor Hong regarding the poor gentleman whose house is in jeopardy, regarding it's raining and all this sort of stuff, was an example of a complete disrespect towards a taxpaying citizen who looks like he may be facing losing his home soon?
Counselor Hong's outburst?
Yes. Is it your opinion that was completely disrespectful to that person?
The person's not even present, sir.
He was present when he was talking about it, and I'm just inquiring from you. It's a question to you, sir. Is it your opinion that his outburst was disrespectful to that person?
I can't recall. I can't.
Okay, thanks. I just went curious.
Still?
Thank you.
Counselor Hong.
Thank you. Just to answer that, if that person is here and he says that I was disrespectful to him, I would apologize.
Okay, I'm saying you were disrespectful to him.
That's your point of view, but maybe not his. If he were to say that I was disrespectful to him, sir, I would apologize.
Okay. And so the.
Gentlemen, gentlemen, this is not intended to be a debate. The question's been answered.
Thank you for that alternate facts.
I just have one question. What is the fine? If I'm an owner of a project and I move contaminated soil off my site knowingly, what is the fine in the city of Nanaimo? Do we have a $50,000 fine?
Sir, I have no, I have no answer for your question, and I would suspect that staff may not be able to answer that question.
Okay, I'll just leave that question with staff, because it probably might be a good thing to have in place, that if I knew that was only $200 fine, I would take the fine and let the soil go.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Janet Irvine, I live in Nanaimo. Through the chair, I have a couple of questions that relate to item 4A on tonight's agenda, and that is the adoption of the minutes of the COW meeting, which was held on June 26 in the SARC boardroom. Those minutes are attached to your agenda. So on page four of those minutes, I'm referring to item 10B, which is Counselor Fuller, Neighborhood There are three motions relating to infill design guidelines. And because of the importance of this topic, which is people's residential property related to infill, I'm referring to the second motion, which carried unanimously. That motion speaks about neighborhood associations being included in the associated consultation. I have two specific questions. During the council discussion in that June COW meeting, which was held in the SARC boardroom, there was mention of an umbrella association. I assume that's an umbrella association of neighborhood associations, which I think has been known in the past as the Neighborhood Network. So, excuse me, in the past, I'm aware that those network meetings have been held on City Hall premises with city staff in attendance, and I'm wondering if minutes of those network meetings have ever been available to the public?
Thank you. Can anyone staff answer that question? Mr. Lindsay.
Thank you, your worship. So if I understood, the question was, does the city staff keep track of the Neighborhood Network minutes and provide those to the public? Was that the, was that the question?
Yes.
Sorry, I didn't hear the answer.
Sorry, I was trying, I was restating the question before I answered it. So the question is, does the city staff take the minutes of the Neighborhood Network meeting, and do we provide them to the public? That was, that was your question.
Because I attended one five years ago, and Counselor Fuller, who was then Citizen Fuller is quite aware of this, he was the chair of that meeting, in the City Hall boardroom at City Hall. City staff are in attendance, or at least they were then, and I believe minutes are taken. So because city staff is in attendance and it takes place on City Hall premises, my question is, are the minutes of those network meetings, have they ever been made available to the public?
Your worship, the answer is no, although staff have in the past assisted with coordinating the network meetings, including helping with some of the agendas and even hosting it from time to time at the City Hall or the service center. The meetings are actually, the committees' meetings and staff are there as a resource, we're not there as a, as a city meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Through the chair, my final question is, does the city still liaise with any citizen who purports to be a representative of a neighborhood association that exists in name only? And if so, how democratic is that?
I would, I'm sure we would need an example, or you to be more specific.
The example I give is also Mr. Counsel, now Counselor Fuller is very aware of. It is called the Western Neighborhood Association. I happen to live in the area. Five years ago, I attempted to be very proactive and actually went to a network meeting at City Hall with the citizen who liaises with the city, or the city liaises with him. In other words, on your website, there are lists of neighborhood associations and contact information and all the details. So five years ago, I tried to be very proactive and get involved. Unfortunately, it didn't work out too well. You were talking about disrespect tonight. Unfortunately, almost at the end of the meeting, the person I attended the meeting with had to have an angry outburst at me.
Ma'am, you've gone way off topic here. We need a question relative to tonight's, tonight's agenda.
You don't realize, if the, my point is, Mr. Mayor, my point, my specific point, is that the city deals with these people. Somehow, they're officially acknowledged as official representatives. Well, if they don't communicate with anyone at all, and it's only a name, a name only, why, my point is, why is the city condoning that? So as I asked, if so, how democratic is that? Because I think you put a lot of importance into these associations and this network, this so-called umbrella, which you were speaking about at this COW meeting in June that I referred to. So is there any staff member in the city who could speak to me about this?
Mr. Lindsay.
Your worship, staff are always more than happy to have the discussion, but what I would say in general is that neighborhood associations come to the city, they self-identify. We do not get involved in how they're incorporated, whether they're society. We do not get involved in how they're incorporated, whether they're societies or whether they're more loose group of individuals. But once they self-identify themselves to the city, we include them in our referrals if there's a project in the area, just so that they're aware of any kind of proposal. How they share that information after we refer to them is up to the individual association.
Thank you. Thank you. Anything else, ma'am?
Do I take it? Thank you very much. Do I take it that Mr. Lindsay would speak to me? My question was a staff member.
Mr. Lindsay.
Yes, more than happy to talk with you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions? Motion to adjourn. Counsel Hong, seconded by? Counsel Bestwick, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Do we adjourn?